Councilmember Short, would you do the invocation, please?
Please rise with me, please. At this council meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and the keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we sit delivering.
And Councilmember Knoll, a pledge, please.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to start off with the mayor and council comment. Doug, anything on your end?
Nothing here.
Yeah? Negative. John?
No, sir.
No.
All right. Let's move to public comment. I've got a couple cards here. You all know the rules, but I'll bring them back up again. Three minutes, one-way conversation. This is a public comment, so we're not allowed to respond back to you if you're hoping for a response. And we'll start off with Becky Jones. Name, address, and three minutes.
Hi, I'm Becky Jones. We live in Dunwoody. My thought is, I send y'all emails from time to time, not tons of emails, but emails that I consider to be important. And the only one that responds to me generally is Terry. And I would love it if y'all would just respond back and say, "Thank you for your email," and just send me one back, so that I know you got it. And that's my one point, is I'd just like to know that the flow is going in both directions. So, thank you. Thank you.
Next name up is Danny Ross. Name, address, and three minutes, Mr. Ross.
Danny Ross, 1859 Sillier Court. I found that others can speak better for me so tonight I may ask Kimberly, Warren, and the mayor to speak for me.
The testing has yet to solve the issues, so they're continuing to work on that. And we haven't answered any questions, but right now it's just a matter of getting that issue resolved before we can do final testing and go live.
Yeah, and I think we're talking more days to two, but we can add more if they want. It's a bug more than a problem.
February 2013.
Do final testing on Metro Ethernet and then go live.
We'll convert that to a negotiated agreement. We have to come up with a solution and execute a quote at the end of last week for the 10 development hours to be able to do that. From there, we'll go into final testing and go live. My expectation is we'll be live in the next few minutes.
June 2013.
... software vendors and found that there is a programming solution. It's just a matter of additional time and software and cost, or developing cost to make this happen. So, we are working to get a statement of work from both vendors, and then we will begin programming, testing, and then go live. In June, the programming has commenced to address the last identified issue, the transference of medical determinant codes. OSIS and SAGAR has completed their side of the programming, and Interact expects to be complete with theirs by the end of the week, while then move into testing. And once we've successfully completed all the testing, we'll go live.
August 2013.
And all the programming has been completed related to the medical determinant issue, and we are in the midst of the testing phase. Our next milestone in the testing phase will be the transition of the Metro Ethernet permanent data connection. And once we have finished testing, satisfaction of all the parties, we will go live.
September 2013.
Always update, we've completed a significant amount of testing on the interface. We continue to be in the, sorry, the testing phase, and we are making the transition to the permanent data connection. We have thus far transitioned the Chatcom side of the interface and scheduled for Thursday, the transitioning of the DeKalb County side of the interface. Once we've made that move, then it'll just be a little bit more of fire around testing, and then we'll be able to go live. The transition to permanent data connection, the Metro Ethernet at both centers, as well as completed the technical level of testing. The next big milestone to the process are the supervisor training at both of the Narrows centers and the training of all the personnel that will actually deal with interfaces themselves.
November 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you very much.
Before you cut the light off, did you use that phone?
Can you turn this off?
Oh, it's in his video.
Next name up is Robert Wolfher. Name, address, and three minutes, Mr. Wolfher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Robert Wolfher. I'm a permanent member of the Georgetown community since 1967. And my comments tonight, I'd like to follow up on the comments I made on January 24th meeting, I believe it was, right before our first ice storm. Regarding the free training that's available from the Southern Poverty Law Center, the SPLC, I want to make a couple of things clear. I've spoken to my council member, who I know has spoken to Chief Grogan, who I know is here tonight, so I would like to speak also to Chief Grogan vicariously through you tonight. And repeat that this is free training that is available from the SPLC for our law enforcement officers, doesn't cost a dime. All you have to do is pick up the phone, call the SPLC. The number's available with the information I left at the last meeting. My understanding from Jim is that my representative, Sharon, has that information. She has the two articles I left with you to read and the video. If you haven't read the articles yet, I hope you would. I'm going to comment briefly about the same comment that Becky just made, that sometimes comments are made or suggestions are made to council, and you never know whether anybody ever followed up on it or not. So, I'm looking at Danny right now, and I know Doug wasn't here that night, but I'm sure he could get the information from Sharon. Mr. Mayor, you were here, Terry, Lynn, and John, you were all here. Just a rhetorical question, did you read the two articles? And if you didn't, I would hope that you would respect me well enough as a taxpaying member of this community and do that, read it. And did you look at the video? And did the chief look at the video? Did the chief read the two articles? I know that this training, from my understanding, talking to my representative, that the chief has mentioned that they have training similar to this. But, you know, this training is free, it's available to the city free of charge. It would complement any training that's been made available to our law enforcement officers. And I would like to just say that, you know, training like this is not easy to come by from post-certified law enforcement officers. I want to make one thing clear, that this training is not for the sovereign citizens. That was from 2010. This training is a new video and a new training that's available regarding gang activity, which is very prevalent in our community, whether people realize it or not. So, it would benefit our officers to do it. It's an ongoing conversation. This training's available from now forward, so I'd like to hear from my representatives how they feel about it, if they've spoken to the chief about it, and if the chiefs have the courtesy to pick up the phone and call the SPLC and find out about it before they make any decision one way or the other. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. That's all we have for public comment. We are going to move on to city business. G1, update on CAD to CAD with Kimberly Gray.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Since the agenda was published, I'm happy to report that the issues mentioned in my memo have since been resolved. Our official final center-to-center test is scheduled for later this week, and we approached that testing date with no outstanding issues. I know you all appreciate how long this testing process has been, and I am sure you look forward to this final test as much as I can. The necessary approval meeting with the Chatcom Technical Advisory Committee has been scheduled for next week. When I reached out to the Chatcom Authority Board to schedule a meeting for their consideration, they agreed that the TAC, and I speak, Chatcom's vendor, agree with moving forward towards implementation, and that's all the approval we need. So, really, yes, we have the last two steps left. Following the TAC meeting, we'll move to implementation. Those centers need to ensure that all their personnel are familiar with the interface, and we will go live as soon as we get that green light. Once we go live, we will follow all calls transferred using the CAD to CAD interface with a phone call to a dedicated line in the DeKalb dispatch area in order to verify transmission of the call and critical call information, such as the address and the nature of the call. This is in addition to an automated acknowledgement that Chatcom receives when the call is successfully transferred to the cab using the CAD to CAD interface. I would be happy to answer any questions.
So, had they started training the personnel? We've talked about this before.
Certainly. So, we've been involving their lead supervisors in testing of the interface for several months now. We thought that was the best way to familiarize them with it on the Chatcom side, so it's a two-party answer. On the Chatcom side, the way they will handle our calls will be very similar to how they're handling Johns Creek and Sandy Springs fire and heat calls. The difference will be, instead of selecting Sandy Springs dispatch or Johns Creek dispatch, they'll now select DeKalb County from a drop-down list of where to send this call for dispatch equipment. So, yes, but at the same time, it's not that they have to train them on a whole new process and personnel. Lieutenant Munahan has been, on the DeKalb County side of this, been great in involving not just his lead supervisors, but personnel from the fire side throughout his organization to ensure that that process will be very effective.
So, one of the things you just said, which wasn't in the report, was that the verification process, which is a nice safety blanket, probably a necessary safety blanket to have, especially at the beginning. But my concern is, is that the cab doesn't seem to be particularly well-staffed at their dispatch centers. So, my presumption is they push the button, it transfers it to the cab. We hope someone answers the phone as opposed to putting someone on hold. But then, who's going to answer the second call? Because all of us, I think, at least my experience with the cab 911 before he became the city was I was on hold a certain percentage, a high percentage of the time I actually called. And so...
And that's why this CAD to CAD interface is important to us, in that when Chatcom enters that information and selects DeKalb County to process it for dispatch, the CAD system will, once connected through this CAD to CAD interface, will electronically acknowledge. So, it will tell Chatcom what's the incident number that's been assigned to this case in DeKalb County. It will, the interface is designed to automatically tell you that information. The phone call I spoke of is not transferring the caller. Caller stays with Chatcom.
Right, I understand that.
One discussion. But the phone call goes to the DeKalb County dispatch area. So, we avoid where DeKalb's biggest challenges. Their challenge is with the call-taker side of their operation. The dispatch pod is staffed, because they are always working to dispatch emergency medical equipment.
Okay.
But that area, that pod, as they call them, does not take phone calls, except on that administrative line. So, they're, they have a high level of confidence that they will always have someone available to answer that line and verify that they received a call and that the nature and information on that call is correct.
I still, I remain concerned, as I have been for the last forever, that we are at the mercy of our providers here. And I'd like to know if there's an increased awareness that we're part of this puzzle now?
Yes.
In that when we, when Interact did their upgrade, or whatever they did, I guess update, there was an effect on our product.
Yes.
So, I'm concerned that in six months, they might want to do an update again, and it'll, will have to go offline, but for longer than might be necessary. Do you understand my question, which is, I'm just, do they understand?
I, I think so, too. Yes, I believe this process has led to a heightened awareness, and the challenge was the scale and size of the update that the cab had to complete. Those type of updates are relatively rare for CAD systems, because due to the security and complexity related to those systems, they try to make small changes over time as opposed to full-scale major updates. But as those are necessary, yes, we will be part of the planning, we will be part of that, we are part of that supply chain, if you will, of information, and they know that they need to involve us in those decision-making processes and the timing and preparing for those updates.
And I have one last question, which is, in the unlikely event of a total computer meltdown, which would happen, no matter, could happen no matter who were calling 911-2, and it has happened in spots across the country in the past forever, is there a plan in place at Chatcom for Dunwoody for the fire and emergency?
Yes.
Okay.
Should the interface fail, the one-button transfer is our backup methodology and welcome to you.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want clarification, I think you said all this, but I just want to hear it, I want to hear it again. So, we're going to test later this week.
Yes, sir.
And Chatcom has already approved all of this, so basically, once the test proves out, Chatcom has said, yes, we'll run with it after, basically immediately on the backside of the test as soon as we've got everybody trained up.
Chatcom's asked, Chatcom's asked that we attend their Technical Advisory Committee meeting, which is scheduled for next week, to have that group agree that they believe we're ready for implementation. But yes, we have received assurances from every level and I think every member of Chatcom that they want to see us succeed with this project, and they are willing to consider approval for implementation at that meeting. So, it's lined up and ready, know it's not a rubber stamp, and that they want to make sure that final test goes well.
So, but assuming the test goes well, it shouldn't advance?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Have we done any prelim tests?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Several of them, yes, sir, we have. More scheduled for this week.
So, really, you've done all the prelim tests, and really, the final test is, is it just a backup that everything in the prelim was correct? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We have had many vendor-to-vendor testing sessions. In the test environment, the vendors for DeKalb County and the vendors for Chatcom can log into their testing server and test every aspect of the interface. That's actually how we have done all troubleshooting and how we've completed every issue that service in over the past several years. And this is, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure we've done prelim tests, and the test next week just is the first one out there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just ask a quick one. You mentioned that you're, you know, we're going to be following up with phone calls.
Yes, sir.
For how long? A couple weeks, for a couple of days?
That is the standard operating procedure that we've outlined for handling CAD to CAD interface calls. My intention is that we will always follow, follow phone calls. Chatcom currently has a CAD to CAD interface where they send the information for Johns Creek dispatch of their emergency medical services. And they have had that in place for years now, and they still follow every call with a phone call to make sure the call went through, because these are very important calls. And at the same time, there are not that many of these calls, so neither centers got as an extreme burden on their personnel to make sure that they went through successfully.
Kimberly, you explain the dropdown going to DeKalb County. Explain to me how and what would happen if they picked the wrong city by accident? The CAD to CAD gets automatically transferred to the wrong one. Explain how that would happen. What's the backup for that?
It actually cannot. If they select the wrong city from the dropdown, the transfer won't occur, in that the transfer is, the CAD systems won't be connected in that way, in that they're not, gosh, let's see if I can better answer that. If you transfer an incident appropriately, you'll get an automatic acknowledgement back, automated through the system, to tell you what incident DeKalb County assigned to it. So, if you select the wrong dropdown, you won't get that automatic message.
Okay.
So, they, they would know immediately that something was wrong, and then they would be able to correct that.
I think also the addresses, can I fill in?
Also, the addresses for the wrong jurisdiction is another reason that that call would not be able to be transferred in my place.
Okay. I had a complaint just yesterday about an address that wasn't being served by Chatcom. They were told it wasn't being served. It's the first I've heard of it, I would have come to you sooner, but Laurelwood Road, right by the Water Works. We had a complaint on it yesterday. I want to make sure that the incidence of where an address doesn't show, what percentage? Is that pretty small? And I mean, and we jump on that immediately.
As soon as you let me know.
Laurelwood Road, verify all the addresses on Laurelwood Road in the Dunwoody North subdivision that butts to the back of the DeKalb Water Works. There's a whole bunch of streets back there.
Yes, we review our databases regularly.
Okay.
That is of utmost importance to us.
Yeah, again, the first I heard of it is yesterday, so I wanted to make sure that you were aware of it today.
All right, I will be at the TAC meeting with Kimberly and the whole TAC crowd on Wednesday. As I've been assured, the board of directors doesn't need to meet any further. If TAC says yes, then away we go. So, that's...
Yeah, let me just clarify, too, that Wednesday is the, not this Wednesday, it'll be next week.
Right.
Wednesday, 5th.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, let's move on to G2, discussion of the appointment of the city attorney. This has been an item that I brought on. Since we let our original city attorney go, we've had Robin Clenden on as assistant city attorney, so pretty much. And this is just formalizing the relationship we've had with him for now several years, since day one, yes.
Yeah, I'll clarify, we have an existing arrangement with the firm. This will be a city code requirement of actually appointing the city attorney through the council process, which is the part that needs to be done. Maybe semantics, but...
Okay, there, you know, this is supposed to be on the consent agenda for later, if you guys don't have any issues with that. So, any comments, questions?
The one I'm happy with, the appointments.
Okay. I have a brief question. Do you guys do any work for Sandy Springs?
Yes, sir, we do represent Sandy Springs.
I guess, you know, given our interactions ongoing with Chatcom, you know, do we have, you know, in that area, like a basic conflict of interest there?
One of the things, in Sandy Springs, we serve as the assistant city attorneys. And generally, I do a lot of the work in Sandy Springs as the assistant city attorney. One thing, and Doug will, everybody who is aware is a lawyer, I'm sort of trained to look for any potential conflicts of interest, and if I find there is a conflict of interest, I will immediately step out of that. I can tell you, in Sandy Springs, I have no interaction with that Chatcom process. And over here, if we do end up with something that would be engaged with the city of Sandy Springs, I would likely get outside counsel to handle that issue for me. And if it was under the retainer, it would be something I would have to provide under the retainer.
Okay. And I think Chatcom is represented by itself, too.
That is true. And Chatcom is an independent authority that has its own council as well, so, you know, we look for it. With any sort of conflict, you look for even the appearance of impropriety, so, you know, even if we're there, we would look for the ability to get out of that, if it looked problematic.
Cecil, since you mentioned Sandy Springs, can you tell us about your interaction with Doraville and/or Shambly?
Sure. Shambly, we have no relationship in Shambly. We are the city attorneys in Doraville as well, so similar situations. If we have situations that would involve both jurisdictions, if there were any issues with that, if we identified any potential conflict, really even a potential conflict, we would likely find outside counsel to represent both cities at that time. Similar situation. Rare occurrences, we've actually represented these cities for many years, and I can think of, you know, a handful of situations where it's actually come up. But when we do identify that, we early on will identify the conflict and find other attorneys to assist you with it.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to G3, discussion of appointment of a new member to serve on the Planning Commission, and that being Hayward Westcott. And to fill you in a little bit, his bio is on the second item on our sheet here on G3. But a couple of things I wanted to kind of bring up. We have seven members of the Planning Commission and three city council districts. So, we have three in one district, two in the other two districts. We are now going from three in District 1, with Don Converse moving away, to now three members in District 2. So, it'll be two in 1, three in 2, and two in 3. Could you follow that?
Mm-hmm. Who's on first?
I know. So, it was, it's important, I think, that most of our, and actually all of our boards, authorities, committees, et cetera, have had people sprinkled from left to right and north to south in the city, and this achieves that. So, any other questions?
Mine isn't a reflection of Hayward, but at some point, we're moving to an application-based process, correct?
Yes.
And where are we in that process? I know we just talked about it only three weeks ago.
We're in the process of preparing the applications, and they'll be uploaded to the web.
Okay. So, this should possibly be the last appointment of its type, where we don't have applications?
There may be one or two more, but yeah.
Depends on time.
We're getting close to actually ending up with a stable of people on the bench who've already made, expressed interest in joining one board or authority or another committee. And then, and we'll have that list available on our website.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make it clear to everyone that the reason Don Converse is no longer on there, he and Karen have sold their home and moved to a smaller place. And I think somewhere along the line, Don was on the Citizens for Dunwoody, he's been on the board since whenever, I think somewhere along the line, some type of a commendation there for him, a letter would be in order. The second thing, I would like, Mr. Mayor, just because this has just popped up, that we leave this on, move that off of the consent agenda and move it to, I guess, new business, wherever you want to put it, either N1 or N5, I guess.
Okay, no problem.
We want N1 and 5.
We normally put it at the bottom, so I would make it N5. This would have been discussed at the last meeting, but we were snowed out.
Mr. Mayor, Warren, is there, there seems to me to be a hierarchy in the sense of the different committees that we have. We have the Community Council, the ZBA, and the Planning Commission, and they all have residents of Dunwoody serving on each. Has there been any interest of members of the Community Council or the ZBA moving up? There seems to be a hierarchy of importance to a certain extent. Have we had any interest of people moving from one board to another, being promoted that you're aware of?
Not at all, I'm aware of it.
Okay. And then the other thing, I just want to make sure, I asked you this in a phone call, but Hayward's wife actually serves on a committee already. Is there, I believe it's the ZBA, is there any reason in which they cannot be husband and wife serving on two different committees?
The opinion of staff is that there is no conflict present with that. From an analysis standpoint, there really is not a hierarchy that includes both the Planning Commission and the ZBA, in that the changes to code, re-zonings, or applications for special permits, go through the process where it's Community Council, Planning Commission, and City Council. The Board of zoning appeals is on a different track, where they handle appeals of administrative zoning decisions and other things that are assigned to them in the code, so the two don't really meet on the same issue. There are some issues where there may be a rezoning antivariants associated with it that would hit both boards, but there, those approvals would be on different schedules for approval. And then the second element to that is that, you know, they have certain ethical responsibilities, discuss certain items or form opinions prior to public hearing, and that would apply whether they're, you know, the same household or if they're in different households.
Okay, thank you.
John, do you point, there have been two. One, Aron Lynn moved from the Planning Commission to City Council. And then two, Tom Dwyer moved from Community Council to the Planning Commission to fill that spot.
And that's actually my point, in the sense that, to me, there seems to be a hierarchy. We've taken a lot of responsibilities away from the Community Council, and I believe we out, it may be fully full right now, but we've had problems filling that because of the lack of responsibility of some seat. But the Planning Commission being a much higher level, and the ZBA being almost just as important, I guess there's a hierarchy in some eyes. And putting, I like Hayward... And putting, I like Hayward, don't get me wrong, I just want to make sure that policies and procedures are in place, where if we have members who have served this community diligently for a number of years and would like more responsibility, that they had the opportunity to put in an application to move up to a different position that they may enjoy more, or differently, or serve in a capacity of what they feel is a higher importance. That's all.
Okay. Any else? Anything else? All right, let's move on to G4, review of the regular meeting agenda. We've already had a suggestion to move what was J5 to M5. Anything else? All right, we'll discuss and note on that change the agenda at the next meeting. Any other business, text amendments?
No.
All right, let's move on to public comment. We have a couple more cards here for public comment. Again, you already, most of you already know the rules. I see the same two names came back up, so Robert Wofford.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Robert Wofford. I live in the Georgetown community. And I just want to speak again about the SPLC training. I want to make it clear that it is the chief and the agency that has to request this training. But this is a topic that is probably a priority of our council as well, seeing that we created our city, one of the number-one jobs behind creating our city was for public safety, if I recall, and this is definitely, falls under that category. I wanted to speak to Dennis Shortle directly tonight, and just think back to when the council and the chief worked together to get us a big armored vehicle to protect our police officers. And I remember, I'm not going to quote Danny tonight, but he said something to the effect, if I can be so bold as to paraphrase, that anything that would help protect our law enforcement officers and make our community safer, that he would get behind. And I really feel that you all, all feel the same way about that. And Terry, my wife and I, we're not Rotary members, I know you are. I know you are, because we took part in the 5K run a couple of years ago that that organization puts together. And although we can get our training somewhere else, and it may be redundant training to do that, we enjoyed it, we learned a lot from it, we met new folks, and it was beneficial to do it, even though we were getting other training, you know, other runs in and exercise somewhere else. And that's kind of what this training is. I know that my representative has spoken to Chief Rogan about this, and I know that they do get this kind of training. But again, the SPLC training is unique, and I would hope that this council and the chief would take the time, again, to pick up the phone, call the organization, ask about it before you make a decision about whether it's something that this Dunwoody community could use. I know it is something the Dunwoody community could use, but I hope you guys will see that, too. And you're only going to see it if you go at it, go at it with open eyes and get the information. The only way to do that is pick up the phone, call the organization, find out what it's about, talk to their post-certified officers, find out the training, and see if we can incorporate it into the training that already exists for our officers. I'll end it by saying, it could be training that saves one of our officers' lives, and it could very well be training that protects our community above and beyond the training that they're again. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wofford. Last name up is Danny Ross. Three minutes. Name of the person.
Danny Ross, 1859, Seneor Court, Dunwoody. If you went to your ATM machine at your bank, and you could make a deposit in that ATM machine, but you couldn't make a withdrawal, would you think that's a very effective service? If you went to an ATM machine and you could make a deposit, and you couldn't find out what your account balance was, irrespective of where you work, whether you're in Dunwoody or whether you're in Beijing, you could do that for the bank. I'm here to tell you tonight, I've looked, I've reached out to Joe Espy of the Chatcom, I've reached out to Lieutenant Monahan of the CAD 911 to verify this, but I asked recently Joe Espy to give me an analysis of what the difference between his CAD to CAD and the CAD to CAD that we're going to be having, operating, and I'm delighted to hear that. Congratulations. I hope that's the case. But the problem is, we've got a situation where it's one direction, it's not a bidirectional system. The data would flow in one direction to CAD county, but it will not be able to come back in this direction. It's not a two-way conversation, bidirectional. It's very important in these 911 calls that you be able to communicate in both directions, because the situation of where it is is an important part of our CAD system. I was just absolutely astounded that this was not part of our system. I know we talked about that in January of last year, I have recording of that, when we were having problems with that. It's not in the system. You have to know when something is dispatched, you have to know what's dispatched, you have to know the information about what time it's going to get there. If that dispatch gets lost on the way to where you're going, you have to know that. If it gets blocked up in traffic, you need to know that. This is information. The way this is going to be handled is by manually inserting that business. And every time you put a manual process into it, as we saw in Miss McPeg's situation, you're going to have errors, and that's what we're faced with here. This CAD system may go live, I hope it does in early March, but it's not the system that we had asked for. A totally bidirectional, seamless interface system is what we asked for, and that's not what you're getting, and I'm not happy about it. I'll give you the email exchange here that I have with Mr. Espy, and I think you'll find it very enlightening.
All right, thank you. That's all for public comment. There is no executive session, so Doug.
I adjourn.
Mayor, closing comments.
And I have no comment.
Ava?
Yep.
All right, now Doug.
I adjourn the work session.
Second.
All favor?
All right.